All right, let's open the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Montpelier Roxbury Board of School Directors. First order of business is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to bring issues or concerns to the attention of the board. It is a listening time for the board. That does not mean that we are not taking the concern seriously and that we are not going to look into them and take possible follow-up action. But if we sit here and do not respond, that is because that is what the time is for. It's for you to talk and for us to listen. And also, if oral public comment is not your preferred way to give comment, it can be a little, feel a little on the spot, which we try not to make you do, but I know the poke speaking is not everyone's favorite thing. Please feel free to email us anytime at schoolboard@mpsdt.org. So with that, any public comment in the room? Yes, and please come up to the, yeah, so they can, the folks back home can can hear you well. Yeah, and introduce yourselves.
Okay. I'm primarily interested in looking at the timeframes. So we can look at these and the text that goes with them.
And we can, if, yeah, we can see it from there.
That if you could sit at the chair, because that mic's gonna pick you up. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening. Hey, this I'm presenting to you as to encourage you to think about the choice that we have, one of the choices that we have in front of us right now. And how important it is to be quick in deciding this, otherwise the opportunity may go away. Okay, dear school committee members, given the limited time we have to address two urgent requests from nearby children's programs seeking additional classroom space to enable them to expand their capacity by bringing additional educational programs to the area, we must act quickly. They are each well-run, high-quality programs needing your endorsement to move forward in securing a space at Roxbury Village School. We're all aware that there are few existing full-day childcare programs and special focus elementary programs in Vermont, and that all of them have a very long waiting list for enrollment, limiting a parent's ability to work outside the home. This is our chance to address the serious lack of full-day childcare as well as meeting the needs of families desiring full-day nature-based programs for their children. As educators entrusted with the responsibility for providing high-quality educational opportunities for the children of the community, we can together maximize the availability of these learning environments by choosing to be leaders in supporting programs that support our community's children and non-families. We are requesting your urgent approval of these two programs as tenants. This is your chance to take advantage of this unique request and opportunity to wisely endorse quality education and meet the current specialized needs by defining terms for the rental of the space at RVS by a preschool, Little Sunshine Childcare, Inc., and a Vermont Farm and Forest School, a nature-based elementary program. We look forward to receiving word of your approval for renting space to these two programs in the next two weeks, so we won't all miss the chance to grow the educational possibilities in the area through rental income. For so many families and children in our community, you'll find the attached card indicating the rooms to be rented to each of these schools. All the classrooms meet age-appropriate licensing, square footage, and exit requirements for space. Individual programs can provide tuition data, enrollment expectations, staff credentials, insurance agreements, and any special needs for their classroom spaces. They've each sent you letters describing their programs and requesting the conditions you would require from renters. Your approval of these requests will allow the process of resolving an empty building's reuse for Roxbury residents to move forward. There is no reason to ignore two possible rentals ASAP. Please move to a quick decision to conclude the stress of the past year.
Jacqueline Frazier, the usual suspects here from Roxbury. Speaking to the school and the building, we have a few people who want to speak tonight. Mine is just my personal experience, which has so far been pretty incredible. As a single parent, the after-school program has been extremely helpful. The extra half an hour is gold to 5:30, and it's just the flexibility it has offered me has allowed me to pursue a full-time job finally, because I've been this little caregiver. So now that I have this good coverage, and which was there before, but it's been really specifically helpful. The busing has been a bit messy, but everything else has kind of worked together to come together, and Casey just continues to run a rock star program. And the kids are looking forward to all of the projects they get to do, and their continued after-school learning, and their social-emotional well-being with their community, which is a new community, but an old community for me. So it's been really wonderful, and we're hoping to be able to continue that if given the option. I think my daughter would like to say something. Okay.
All right, I'll jump in. With the warm-up acts for the real stars back here. It's nice to see all of you again. Thank you. I also came to speak to Bridges tonight and just really wanting to advocate and provide some perspective on how incredible this program is. I really, you know, my family has experienced four other reputable after-school programs in other districts, other states. I thought I knew what after-school programming could look like, and then I experienced Bridget's. And Bridges is just a category of its own. It's not childcare. This is not a club that supports hobbies and playing games. Those are great. They have a place, but Bridges is an extension of high-quality academic programming. It's building on and going far beyond what the students are learning in the classrooms. Every session is offering multiple focuses. Kids sign up for a preferred topic. They attend that topic-specific class every single week for four to six-week sessions. The classes are supported by experts in their fields, and like the most inspiring classes we have at school, every session is culminating in a final project or a product that students can share with their community and with their families. In the past year, these sessions have included a phenomenal play for which the students wrote the script, they acted all the parts, they built scenery, they helped design the costumes, they did the advertising. A professional clown came every week to teach our student clowns tricks. The director of Circus Smirkus visited as a creative consultant. Professional singers and designers mentored the student playwrights, and parent volunteers sewed their costumes. The result was a high-quality performance that was comparable to the most expensive theater camps that we have in the state, and yet this one benefited all students regardless of income. My own child, who doesn't consider themselves a performer and would never attend a theater class or camp, felt safe stepping out of their comfort zone and was able to be one of the lead actors because they were, had relationships, and their Bridges leaders could kind of coax them out of their shell, and they had a supportive community where they felt safe really going out of their, out of their wheelhouse. So this session, I've been working every week with the Architecture and Engineering course. It is unbelievable what these kids are doing. They started the session by designing and building containers to pad their eggs through all sorts of drops and impacts, and then they had a competition, which I remember vividly doing in eighth grade. It is a core memory, and I think it's part of what led me toward my profession. So the fact that these guys are getting to do it in second and third and fourth grade is just so special and influential. Another day, we learned how to design floor plans. We used scales and professional graphic symbols, and each of them drew their dream forts. And they brought their biggest, best ideas and designed spaces to accommodate trampolines and gondolas and trapdoors and homes for their pet rabbits. So they've been engineering and constructing and testing bridges built out of pasta. They've experimented with set design, crafting masks and backdrops and 3D photo booths for a recent community celebration. And they're being exposed to so many high-level academic experiences and future professional paths at such young ages. And it's wild just to see their minds grow every day. You can see them visualizing a bigger future for themselves, and so many different ideas of who they are and what excites them and inspires them. And I know this is benefiting them. I hear about it from their teachers at school. Their teachers in the classroom are benefiting from them getting this extra enrichment. And it's, but it's also really gonna feed their ideas of who they can be after graduation and the paths that they can take from this small town. So to the Montpelier families listening, I do want to remind you that this program is available to all kindergarten through sixth graders in this district. It's housed in the former Roxbury School, but it's not exclusive to Roxbury students. We have homeschool students and students from the Matter River Valley and other surrounding communities who are driving in to attend this program because it's so excellent. The Bridges program, this right now, has more students enrolled and attending each week than we had in the entire school last year. So just sit on that one for a second. Like, every student practically from the school and more are coming back each week to our program. While the current budget issue is a significant priority, and I don't take it lightly, this board and this district administration is also responsible for holding a vision for the future of our district. And as funds become increasingly tight for in-school resources, please consider these unquantifiable cost savings to the district from programs like Bridges. It offers students deep senses of belonging. It extends their social-emotional learning that is a core to our MRPS goals, and it builds on the academic learning that is happening in the classroom. These are very expensive benefits that are being provided at a steep discount due to this extensive network of unpaid volunteers who co-lead and support the program, parents serving as assistant teachers, and the network of incredible professional resources that Casey is able to draw from. Last year, the Bridges program was run five days a week for a total cost of less than $105,000. This is 0.003% of the district's $31 million budget. It would be short-sighted for this board to stop funding one of the most successful programs in the district, particularly one that is critical to some of the most vulnerable kids in the district who really require the ongoing support from their community to successfully adapt to the upheaval of having their school closed. I encourage you to look to the Bridges model as one that can be expanded upon and replicated across all grades at this district to provide more academic supports, more career exposure, and stronger social-emotional foundations into the future to benefit all the kids in this district. Thank you very much.
I'll pass these here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Jenny Bartlett-Parti. I'm a year-round admin assistant at Main Street Middle School, and I'm also the co-chair of the Ashmead Union. I hope that this evening I can give you all a glimpse of who we are and what our union is and the importance of that before decisions are made before cutting the budget. For those of you who may not be familiar, the Ashmead Union is made up of year-round, in-school-year support staff, currently consisting of two head custodians with one position at the high school that's been open for quite some time, nine custodians with ongoing openings throughout the district, and nine admin assistants, some of which are registrars, and four technology specialists. It's a small group of just 24 professionals with strategically assigned roles within each school in the district with minimal crossover in responsibilities and redundancies. We may not always be the ones working directly with the students, but we are often reminded of that we are the backbone of the district. Admin assistants primarily, primary responsibilities, to name a few, are managing attendance, assigning substitutes, enrolling students, programming schedules, family communications, ordering, and financing. They are also expected to know the ins and outs of the daily routines and the needs of the admin, staff, students, and faculty. They're the first to greet new and returning families and community members, and they are consistently the same person who greets students daily, assisting them in navigating their school day. The custodians and head custodians in the MRPS district are rare finds. They take time to build relationships with school communities and with students. In addition, they are dedicated to ensuring the safety of our students, staff, and faculty. They often cannot complete all of their tasks within their assigned 40-hour week. And they also make themselves available on weekends for overtime for student and community events that take place within the schools. Very few, very, very few individuals could perform these duties at such a caring level as we see in our districts. Our four tech specialists work to ensure that students receive the devices and programs they need to be successful and that our teachers have up-to-date tech they require to teach the students daily. They are responsible for researching, implementing ways to protect the district and student information from data breaches. If you've ever worked in a school system when the internet goes down or the network goes down, you'd know the purpose of having important and capable technology specialists available. When forces are reduced without understanding why each position is crucial to the school, there are repercussions. The responsibilities of those being cut still need to be completed. Those responsibilities will shift to those who remain and already have an abundance of work that sometimes fills more than 40 hours a week. This affects everyone from school communities to families, faculty, admin, and ultimately the students. Burnout of staff leads to revolving door of new employees coming through the doors, quality and quantity of work that can be completed, and the relationships formed with families and students. We're asking the board to be well-informed by those working in the positions of those being considered for elimination. The current support staff positions exist for a reason. There must be enough support staff to brace the already top-heavy system. Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Frazier from Roxbury. I'm here to talk about the the final report of the Committee for the Future of the RVS Building. It's the 800-pound gorilla in the room tonight. We all know and have heard how great the after-school program is. We hope that in your wisdom, you'll continue that program no matter what scenario the building carries on with the building. Judy Lusk and I started this ad hoc committee back in August, I think it was, when there really wasn't any, any information out there about what was going on with the school. I mean, I knew after I thought about it for a while back in '22 that this was gonna happen. Because in July of '22 is when we lost our vote. And it became vote of the board to close our school. So you haven't really closed the school. You voted to take the kids away. You didn't even need a Pied Piper. You just voted. So we're left with a decision in the town as to what to do with the building. We looked at a lot of different scenarios, and really what it comes down to is that we, we want to get the building back as soon as possible. Because, as Mia said in one meeting, she and Libby, when you use words like foreseeable, they really don't mean anything. foreseeable can be till next week or next year. And the town of Roxbury needs some certainty. We have before us, Dottie has presented options to rent the entire building at this point so that it will be supported and not be a burden on the town. Because contrary to what, you know, some of the speakers from Montpelier have said in a very condescending fashion, that you are giving us a community building. Well, it's like giving somebody the flu because it comes at a terrible cost. And we, as, we're just as overtaxed as you are in Montpelier. And to take on not only our normal school tax, but then to take on the support of this building, which is another, would add another 6-plus cents to our tax rate. You don't, you know, for some reason, that just escapes everybody. Oh, we're just gonna get the building back, and it's not gonna cost anything. You're just gonna have it as a community space. You know? Well, that isn't the case. And through our work and some very lucky circumstances, people have come forward to make use of the space. Farm and Forest School is interested in three rooms plus an office. Roxbury Roots is interested in a kitchen plus the nurse's room. They would expand or connect the two. The Little Sunshine Outfit from Randolph is interested in two rooms for, for pall care. The, what's the other one? I can't think. Well, two individuals want to rent offices. So we, we have taken, we've done our homework. And now we need you guys to get off dead center and make a decision. Now, I know the school board, or the select board, has had some communication with, with the board. I don't know what that is. Somehow, it seems to be, well, you guys know about executive sessions, so a lot of what they've talked about has been an executive session. But the most important thing, I think, for people to realize is that the town of Roxbury needs certainty. And if you put this off, turning this back to the town of Roxbury, we have no idea what the voters in Montpelier are gonna do. So that just puts us off another year. You know, they may turn down your, your vote, your, your budget, and the first thing you'll do is cut the $175,000 to run this, the after-school program. So what we need is to take the building back and finance the building ourselves, and then have you run the after-school program for the benefit of the students. There's no equity for our kids in what you've done. You've taken them out of their community and put them in a community that they and their parents had no choice, no say in at all. And you've done, in, in a way, you've addressed it as though, oh, it's the best thing for your kids. They'll get a much better education at UES. Well, I've read the UES climate report, and that's not the case. That is not the case. Now, our kids are doing fine. Kids are resilient. They'll do well. What I'm worried about is the town. The town, the school, you guys have all been there. It's, it's the center of our community. Has been for the last 30, 40 years, whatever. Well, 200 years. But as it's, it's present configuration, it's been there for 40 years. It has our town hall. It has our potentially town water and sewer system in place. We have to take the building back. We don't have any choice for those two reasons. But the most important thing is that we get that decision made so that we can move forward. This business of being hung out to dry constantly has to stop. And I think the most important thing to move it forward is for you to make a decision tonight to turn this building back to Roxbury before Town Meeting Day or based on, because as I understand from the last select board meeting, it's not an issue of the town vote. The select board can just take it back because the, the $1 business was already decided in the merger vote. So it can be a decision of the select board. Then, of course, town meeting, well, they'll have to put a budget item in to, to fund the building. So there is gonna have to be a vote. There's a lot of details that have to be worked out. But I just want this board to get off dead center and stop dragging us through the dirt. I mean, it's, this has been going on. You had the busing situation, you know. Kids are, kids are doing fine. Kids are resilient. They'll always do fine. It's the rest of us that have the problem. And the town has a serious problem. If they have to, you know, wait another year and we lose all these rental options, then where are we gonna be? And, you know, the only way forward for for you, if you hold on to it for another year, is if you make contracts with these people who want to rent space in the building. And, you know, I certainly don't see anybody jumping forward to do that. So I think you need to just, you know, tear the Band-Aid off. Let us have the building back. Let us go forward and fill the building with kids. That's really what, what the townspeople want. So hopefully, you're gonna make a decision tonight, and hopefully, it'll be to immediately work out arrangement with the select board to send the building back to Roxbury. Then you'll be done with it. You won't have to worry about it. You won't have to hear Tina Muncie come in here and tell you how great it is that we're giving, you guys are giving us the building. You know? Thank you.
Say something? Same page.
I think this, this school should be open because people learn a lot of stuff there, and we all get to have fun and be friends. And all of us don't get to see each other that much because all of us are in separate classes, and we get to hang out with our friends there. And it's a community school, and we like to hang out with each other.
That was very well said. Wait, before you leave, before you leave, can you say your name into the mic for us? Can you come say your name in the mic? True public commenter.
Teddy.
Thank you. Thank you, Teddy.
I'll be real quick here. Judy Lusk. I was the co-chair with Tom. I just want to express that on Monday night at our select board meeting, we had a lot of young community members coming and acting very excited about the prospect of getting our building back and about the layout that we have here and what the building could be and what our community could be. And I just implore you to please act as soon as possible and work with our select board to set a date to make this happen. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Yes.
Yes.
I'm Hazel Bryant and at Bridges is, is, is some of the, some of the rare times that all the kids get to hang out together. At U E S, it is usually boys versus girls, but at Bridges, we work together, boys and girls. Bridges is also a way to interact with our community and friends. And we see our beloved teacher Casey. At Bridges, we do a lot of things, including making pods for eggs and dropping them off the place structure. Once, we put on a circus. Bridges is also a place available to kids that live in Roxbury. Bridge, Bridges is very special place to all.
Hi, my name is Catherine Nunley. I work as a part of the support staff team at Montpelier High School and I'm the co-chair for the Ashmead Union, representing MRPS Support Staff, Tech Staff, and Custodial Staff, along with Jenny. I'm also the parent of two Main Street Middle School students and I have an older son that was a graduate in twenty-twenty-two at MHS. I love my job and the people that I work closely with each day in serving students, families, and staff. It's distressing to think that my colleagues and I may not have that opportunity in the coming year due to budget challenges facing our district. I'm not arguing against you looking into how to make the district run more efficiently, but I urge the board to do thorough research and to be transparent in your findings. If you're looking at employees, please do that at all levels from the top down to eliminate. I think the community deserves a breakdown of the pie chart that the district showed at the last board meeting. What do each of the pie pieces exactly represent? I, I implore you to keep asking questions and keep asking them until you are satisfied that you are being given truthful and informed answers. This is a relatively small school system. It is very important to me that relationships remain intact. When I send my kids off to school each day, my trust lies not just in the confidence of their teachers, but also with the other staff in the building who know the ins and outs of what goes on. People who keep our students and staff safe, people who give a smile and a word of encouragement to students or staff to get them through tough days. People who will notice if something isn't quite right with a student and refer them to a school counselor. People who go the extra mile to make sure students have enriching experiences, people who care. I hope that you see me as one of those people who care and that I build trust and a sense of belonging with your children and with you and my years of service to the school and community. And that I, along with my fellow school col, school workers, will have that opportunity for years to come.
Anyone else in the room? So we have two, um, on Zoom. Uh, let's go start with Joe and then Kristen.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
I am Joe Carroll, president of the M R E A, our teachers' union and a resident of Montpelier, zooming in from independent screen with my two cats on the couch. Thanks for bearing with me. Uh, so I know we're facing another challenging budget season and I represent a hundred and fifty educators. And so I wanted to share three concerns with you as you consider how to craft a budget that MRPS voters will be able to support. So first, like Catherine said, at the last board meeting, you saw a pie chart that showed the portion of the school budget and that included the portion for educator salaries. I just wanna emphasize that a chart that shows sixty-seven percent allocation to M R E A educators shouldn't really be surprising as educators directly deliver the education to the students. M R E A educators are the biggest employee unit in the district, but being the biggest does not necessarily mean the most expensive or unsustainable, given our role in educating the students. Second, a related point, we're concerned that you might default to the position of having to cut educator positions to reduce the budget. We wanna point your attention to other parts of the budget that could be looked at, including administrator positions. I'm not super comfortable with saying that, but because it seems that reductions might again be on the table for members of our bargaining unit, the M R E A, and other school workers, we're curious why administrator positions are also not on the table. This is not meant to disrespect administrators in any way. Some of my most cherished connections have been with them. It's just more to reflect how educators feel when the framing is that we might be too expensive, but administrator positions are somehow above scrutiny. And the last thing I'll say is that, uh, we have very aspirational and hugely important district goals. Among these include belonging, equity, high levels of learning, timely systems for intervention, and many other important things. Cutting educators literally cuts opportunities for these goals to be realized. And at worst, cutting educators can communicate that these goals are more like rhetorical flourishes rather than dependent on the material conditions that the humans, the school workers, create for the students. So I ask you to please explore efficiencies beyond reducing the number of school workers who show up every day to spend their days educating the kids of MRPS. I'll close with thanking you for your service to MRPS and looking forward to seeing you at future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, Kristen.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
You could hear you.
Now we can't.
Now we can't.
How about now?
Yeah, you're good, Kristen.
Okay, thanks. Um, thanks for everything that you all do to serve in this role. I know from personal experience, it's a really, really big lift. I came today to speak to your potential vote on the Roxbury Village School, but I would of course be remiss to, uh, not thank Hazel and Teddy for representing your Roxbury friends so uh, articulately and eloquently. So thank you for being there, you two. Um, so I think as, as Tom has, has indicated, you know, this question of the school and ownership is incredibly complex. And so I just wanna urge the school board to continue to work with the Roxbury Select Board um, in ensuring that both communities and, you know, especially I think the Roxbury community has, has accurate information to, to work with. This is not simple stuff. So I just wanna continue, I wanna, I wanna advocate for, um, both of these boards to work closely together so that folks have accurate information. Um, as Judy said, uh, the select board room was full this past Monday at the Roxbury Select Board meeting. As of today, my understanding is, is that the Roxbury Select Board is planning to put the question of whether to resume ownership of the R V S building, uh, to the voters of Roxbury on Town Meeting Day. I gather they're expecting the board to follow the guidance received in your recent community survey um, regarding R V S and, and move to sell the building back to the town, if not tonight, um, soon enough, within a year from tonight. Um, and like Tom said, it sounds like the select board, um, and that was actually said in the meeting on Monday, the select board can, uh, legally make that decision on behalf of the town without a town vote. But it does appear that the select board wants to be, um, wants this decision, I mean, given its, its gravity, to be made by, by the broader community. I, I feel the need to be a realist. I think based on the climate of school funding in Vermont and based on survey results that you receive from the community, I, I expect this board to move to sell the building back to the town of Roxbury. Again, if not tonight, soon enough. And I'm just here to say again, which I, I said at the last meeting, I was, uh, if you do vote, uh, you know, this evening and it's a majority decision, I ask that you absolutely follow through uh, on the funding of maintenance of the Roxbury Building through twenty-twenty-six. Um, and make clear to all that that is non-negotiable fix, fixed aspect of the budget. No matter how hard individuals and groups may push you, I know it's going to be another really difficult budget year. But I'm asking you to build that into the budget, no matter what, um, as an act of fairness to a community who lost its village school and central community hub via a two-and-a-half-week deliberation process that was painful for everybody. Um, I ask you to do that out of concern for the future of Roxbury, where MRPS students live, and because the financial impact on the MRPS budget to maintain the building for an additional year, which I believe is estimated around sixty thousand dollars, will have a nominal impact on tax, tax rates. Um, I'm deeply concerned that without that runway, voters of Roxbury may not vote to resume ownership of the building because there's inadequate time to develop a well-thought-out financial plan to resume ownership of the building. Roxbury will suffer and a massive opportunity will be lost and place our community within another tailspin. What ultimately becomes of this building could literally change the course of our town and shape its future. It has that much gravity. There is no roadmap here. As far as I know, we're the only district currently wrangling with such complex decisions, um, following a school closure. Um, and I, I think we have the opportunity to model for others. Um, as you all know, the chatter is nothing but containment and there's so much school closure talk, um, just even within central Vermont, that this district has and, and our communities have the opportunity to model for others what is fair and when, invest in the future of Vermont communities and ultimately what it means to be in partnership. Um, so again, I just urge and will appreciate all coordination with the Roxbury Select Board and our community to get the information that we need to understand all aspects of the R V S building question. Um, I also just wanna say that Roxbury is like capital A-activated. There is so much, um, activity in this community right now. So many people are participating in and supporting volunteer efforts to feed our community, to create, um, activities and opportunities for socializing within our community at the kid level and the adult level. Um, you know, as you've heard from Tom and Judy tonight, we've had this committee for the future of the R V S building. It's comprised of people who have been in our town for a very long time, have deep connections to the school building, um, and they've been working doggedly for months to proactively think about, um, R V S. So there's just, there's a lot of people that want access to the process and I'm just gonna encourage you to continue funding the building through next year um, so that there's adequate time to ensure the community and the select board has the opportunity to come together and work together on, on the way forward. I know it's not a budget meeting tonight, um, and it's already been said um, a few different ways, but the Bridges After-School Program at R V S is exemplary. Um, as a former after-school administrator and somebody who has worked in that uh, area of education for fifteen-plus years, it is based on, um, you know, research-based practices. Uh, there is so much opportunity for student choice, for student leadership, for opportunities to come, connect with community members and, and places within our community. It's open to all of our, um, MRPS students, um, K through six. And I would just urge you to consider continuing to fund that program into, into the next year as well. Thank you so much.
Good. Thanks, Kristen. Is that good for online? Right. Thank you, everyone. That was, uh, very helpful. Um, next we move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, uh, basically a tool that board uses for expediency. It, we approve things like minutes and other things that are kind of pro forma that don't require discussion. If anyone on the board feels an agenda on the, uh, consent agenda should be pulled off. They have the option of doing that and we can discuss it then. Um, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Don't all jump at once, okay? Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I had one question.
Yep.
What does Nicole West, the person that you said left the Agency of Education?
Holy.
With holy, yeah, that, it wasn't.
I don't know what she does presently. She does not work for the Agency of Education anymore. She, she financial. She was the chief financial officer, yeah.
And so there's a, just a middle.
There are five open positions in the Agency of Education's financial department. I believe two positions are filled.
And before Nicole, it was Brad James, who was a pretty well-known institution of non-education finance.
Brad is, Brad is back as a consultant, consulting.
We were told we were gonna get our first draft of one-term weighted pupils two weeks ago and we had not heard anything.
That's why. Our venture of things to come.
Yeah, hopefully not.
All the favor of the approval of the consent agenda?
I.
Any opposed or objections? Have extensions? Thank you, Sue. Uh, all looking forward to Special Ed State of the States. Thank you.
Roxbury discussion up because there's people from Roxbury who are here to hear it.
Yeah, we're kind of, yeah, do you think we can, well, I'm, I'm hesitant because, uh, based on the agenda, I know she's, she's a paid employee and looking to get back to her family. I'm not sure how long the Roxbury discussion will take, although I appreciate your sentiment on that. I don't know what, what is, what is the board thinking? I, it's, it's hard to be fair to everyone here.
Did you plan on taking a very long time?
I mean, really, really, it will not be more than fifteen minutes.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, now, um, I appreciate the sentiment, but.
Yeah, Joe, and I don't believe it would be more than twelve minutes.
My son is with my younger kids right now.
Okay.
Uh, so, sorry. Okay. Is that working? No, whoops. Wait, hold on.
Okay, you can share a screen or join me.
Um, oh, yeah, no, I can. Oh, what did I do? Oh, jeez. All right, sorry. Oh, no, it is. Why is it not?
Yep, click that box right there.
Click here. Oh, okay.
And then pop back to, go here.
You got it. Okay, there we go. All right. Okay, I'll be quick. I read that message a lot of times. Um, so I, um, sorry, I didn't really think we were gonna be here. I would have made more copies, but everyone does have a copy of my slides. Um, Libby asked me to do kind of an overview of where things stand in the world of special education right now in the district. So, uh, there's a lot of data in here, but not necessarily a lot of data that we have to go into great detail about. So, um, the first slide here is just a comparison data to a point in time. So last year, um, when we did the data report to you all, those were the numbers, um, of students with the I E Ps in the district in five oh fours. And so, um, on November first, I just took that number so we could compare to see where we are at. Um, as you can see, we continue to increase, um, our number of students with disabilities in the district. Some of that increase, we did have a lot of students move in the summer from, I don't know where they're getting housing, but there's a lot of people moving into Montpelier, um, also from within Vermont, from out of state. And we also had, um, I would say a handful of kids move in from independent schools. So, um, you know, like Orchard Valley, for example, we had a number of kids move in. So, um, some of this increased in number is around the movement. It's not necessarily all students that have been here all along, um, being identified now, but we are having an increase. It is. It, yes. Yeah, that is, yes. Um, so we'll keep watching that. Um, okay, the next few slides are just some demographic information. So this fall, the state shared some state and national information, um, with us at a director's meeting. Their information is from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year because they do annual reporting every February, so they're getting ready to do that again. But I, it felt like the, it's the most recent information we have. The district information is from our child count, which we do every December first, so we're getting ready to do that again. Um, but I decided that was the best information to use because it changes so much. Like our child count can change every day depending on where someone is in the evaluation process and that kind of stuff. Um, and so I wanted to have a point in time, um, where we, um, had the information. So this, um, set of demographics here is looking at, um, race and ethnicity and gender. And I would say that in looking at the, the information, we are pretty similar, um, and aligned with the rest of the state numbers as far as that goes. I'm gonna buzz through stuff and then you can ask questions later, if you have any. Um, the next slide is looking at the disability categories. Um, and again, it's looking at national percentages, Vermont percentages, and then percentages in our district. Um, there are a few things that, uh, when I look at this, I, um, had questions about or wondered about. One of the things is the high number nationally of students under speech and language impairment compared to Vermont and to our district. My assumption is that that correlates to the fact that nationally, there's a pretty low number of students with developmental delay. My assumption is that that correlates to the fact that nationally, there's a pretty low number of students with developmental delay. And it's much higher in our state and for in Montpelier. So a lot of, so developmental delay is students three to six years old. And speech is one of the categories that is under that, but it's a more umbrella term. And so my assumption, and it's just my assumption, is that the reason that that is so much lower or that we have a higher, sorry, developmental delay number and a lower speech number is because we're doing more early intervention. So I think that's actually a good thing for us because the speech and language doesn't start till six years old, that disability category. So I think that those numbers probably are reflective of each other. The other number I noticed that is a little bit higher for us in Montpelier and in Vermont than nationally is other health impairment. That, that is medical issues, but that's also what A D H D and anxiety fall under. And so with our change in our regs where we're looking at functional skills now as an adverse effect area. I think that's part of the reason that number is higher because now we're not just looking at academic needs, we're also looking at that functional skill more. Good? Watching this topic. Okay, the next one is looking at least restrictive environment for students with I E Ps. And as you can see here, Vermont and our, we're pretty aligned with Vermont, but it's much higher than what it looks like overall. Nationally for students with disabilities being inside the regular classroom at least eighty percent of the time. One of the things that is not on a chart here, but certainly aligned with that is we also have a much higher number of I As that we use. And so one of the conversations that we've had in our regional directors meetings is that a lot of our inclusion is supported because we have so many I As. And so that number would maybe lower if we weren't able to have the number of supports that we do in classes right now. The other number I will point out to you is that in Vermont, we have a higher rate of students. And, and here in our district, higher, we are higher than Vermont for students that are placed in separate day schools. So those are our students that are being tuitioned to therapeutic schools because we're not able to meet all of their needs in our public schools. All right, the next one is looking at the percentage of students overall, three to twenty-one that have I E Ps. And Vermont is a little higher than the national average and we are a little lower than the average in Vermont. And then the second one is the percentage of our students with I E Ps that are serviced under extraordinary costs. So that's more than sixty-six thousand dollars a year is their cost. And as you can see, we are almost double the state average with that. So though the students that generally fall under that category are again, the students that we are tuitioning out. And then there are also students that are in our schools that have a high level of either I A support, contracted services, that kind of thing. That makes their individual costs over that sixty-six thousand dollar mark. There is a different reimbursement that happens once we get past that mark that I used to know. But then Christina said there's a new something that they're doing with that, so I can't completely explain it to you. But it, there is a different reimbursement that we get past that. And it's very notable that we are almost double what the state average is for that. All right, the next page is just a list of who, who I am talking about when I talk about special education staff and contracted services. So there's myself and my assistant Pam. We have eighteen point five special educators currently, plus we have one unfilled position still. We have four speech-language pathologists. We have our evaluation team. So that's our one school psychologist and another special educator, not in that eighteen and a half. We have a behavior specialist. We have a literacy interventionist that only works with students with I E Ps, two social emotional learning professionals. And then currently we have seven I As that are at the behavior tech level and twenty-six I As that are instructional or intensive needs. And then we have a lot of contracted services. So occupational therapy is a contracted service, physical therapy. We work with teachers of visually impaired, teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing. The U V M I team is a team that comes and consults with teams with, for students with more complex needs. And then we have some students that have behavior technicians that we're contracting still with local mental health agencies, transportation, and then tutors. So that is our, what I'm talking about when I'm talking about our staff because on the next page, there are, yeah.
Educator, we're fully staffed otherwise.
We are. Yes, especially an I A is amazing. It's a celebration. And we did try a couple of different ways to fill that position earlier this year. So we looked first for a special educator and then we tried to see if we could get a literacy specialist to do services, thinking maybe there would be a different, you know, pool of people and we were not able to find someone. So I think with January or December graduations, we might be able to put that out again and see if we're able to fill that position. Okay, this page is just looking at where the special ed expenditures are. So as you can see, the staff salaries and benefits, the benefits word didn't come on there, is a little over half of the money that we spend. The next biggest part of the pie chart is related services. In that is actually some of the people that we employ. So that is our speech-language pathologist, our school psychologist is in there. That is the occupational therapist, the physical therapist, there's part of social workers come out of special ed money. And then contracted services. So that, the, our, our staff salary and benefits actually would be higher if, but it's important to, I think, to separate them because they do provide a different type of service than the special educators and instructional assistants. The next biggest chunk is our tuition out. So that's just under twenty percent of our special ed expenditures go to tuition for students in therapeutic schools. In of those students, fifty percent of them are, have a primary disability of emotional disturbance. Just about a third of them have a primary disability of autism and then the other twenty-one percent have different, different primary disabilities. And then there's administration, which is me and Pam, and then transportation. So any students that we are tuitioning out, we are providing transportation to get to those schools. As well as we have some students that require specialized transportation to our schools. Okay, the next couple of slides are looking at the opportunity gap. So looking at students' achievements on the state testing compared to students without I E Ps for state testing. So this first one is looking at English Language Arts. And we are, this one shows that we are trending in the right direction. If you look on the right side, you can see that our opportunity gap. Wait a minute. Yes, no. Hold on. Maybe I'm saying this backwards. Oh, increase. So no, this is not the one that we're happy about other than. So the gap increased slightly, but when we look at the number of students with I E Ps who are achieving at level one, that number has gone down. So we are, despite the fact that the gap is not looking in the right way yet, when we compare the number of students that have moved from level one to two, that actually is increasing. So we are going in the right way. That number just doesn't show it yet. Does that make sense?
Say it again, no?
Yes, okay. So if you look at the difference between twenty-three and twenty-four, or there, in twenty-twenty-three, there was a forty percent, forty-seven percent difference between students that did not have I E Ps and students with I E Ps. And then the next year, that increased. So that's actually not what we want to do. But then if you look all the way to the left and you look at achievement level one, so that's the lowest. We have less students this past year that are at that level. So they're moving, they're making progress, they're up in level two, so they're not proficient yet, but they are moving in the right direction. Yep. All right, math. We see a decrease in the opportunity gap. Unfortunately, if you look closely though, it's not because the students with I E Ps are doing better, it's because the students without I E Ps did worse. So, so when you look at the number, the, no, the percentage of students with I E Ps that were proficient stayed the same. But there was a big difference between the proficient level, the percentage of students without I E Ps that were proficient in twenty-twenty-three and that in twenty-twenty-four. So if we just look at the gap, we can pat ourselves on the back, but then when you look at why, it's not as great. And there is more students with I E Ps that were at level one last year than the year before. So that one, that's more concerning because that's not trending the way we want. Yes.
But you know how every time we get to see you, I ask, how do we know if our system?
You, hold on.
Actually, it's good indicator.
Okay.
Don't you think like?
It is, it is one indicator. Yes.
One of them.
Yes, absolutely.
The only.
Yes.
It's really fabulous. I just wanted to highlight that it's fabulous to have this data to see the difference that we have in students who have an I E P and students who don't.
Yeah.
To see things moving in the direction we want to would, would be an indicator of our system working.
Absolutely. And I have to give Mike credit because I just took his information. I don't do these. He's definitely the one that does his data. He and Nick, though.
Mike and Nick. Mike and, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah.
Glad to have it.
Okay, yes. So then science, there is a great change in the opportunity gap. So there are many more students last year that were proficient that had I E Ps. And the tricky part with science is this isn't the same cohort of students. So here it is, but it doesn't, this one is trickier because they only take them every couple of years. So I included that, but, you know, it's minimal information for us. And then just to make sure people were aware, we also have a small percentage of students that take an alternate assessment to the state assessment. And so this is what their data looks like and it's, they're, they're a small like, like a number. And this was really just so people know that, that this exists. Okay, and then, yeah, look at this. So remember last year I came with my picture, my paper with my stickers?
Yes.
Now, Mike helped me figure out how to create groups in RenStar so that I can actually look at them without having to do sticker charts. So the next several slides is looking at the growth rate and the achievement rate. So again, achievement is vertical and the growth rate is horizontal. And the dotted lines are where we want to, that's typical, right? So the, if we're looking at the proficiency, that, that dotted line is what is considered proficient in our district. And then the vertical line is showing average growth. So our hope is that, our hope, hope is not a strategy, my husband always tells me. Our goal is to have as many students as possible on the, on the right side of the growth because we want to close the gap. So we want them to have more than a typical amount of growth. So in the next several slides, what I did is I created groups of students with, who have I E Ps at the different schools. So we could look at this for literacy and for math. These results are only students that took it in the spring. So this looks at spring to fall. We will look at them again in December and after December and we'll be able to see the growth from the beginning of the year till now. And then what I did is I created groups of students who are receiving reading services on an I E P. And students receiving math services on I E P, you do not have that information in here. But that actually targets, because this, when we look at all of these next several pages, excuse me, these are all students with I E Ps, but they're not necessarily getting math services. So when we look at students, the, the RenStar math results, we don't know for sure, looking at this chart, right? These aren't necessarily all students getting math services. So this wouldn't tell us if our math intervention through special ed is working. So we ha, I have also got smaller cohorts now for each of the schools that are only students receiving those services. So then, after we administer this in December, I can sit with school administrators and case managers and look at specifically students receiving reading services. How did they do on the literacy thing? And when you're on this site, and this is just a screenshot, when you hover over a bubble, it tells you who the student is and it shows you what, where they were at and where they are now. So it's a really good conversation starter. It is a screener. It is not the end-all, be-all. But it is something that can then have us look at it and say, is that, does this make sense with what we're seeing? Let's talk about this. Did the kid just, you know, push through the test? Did we have to do it again? The other thing that Julie showed me today, which I didn't know, I love having a team that helps me learn, is that when I compare it to the state, so these are district benchmarks. When I compare it to the state, it shows what the benchmark is that the state sets for proficient and then shows us how close the kids are to meeting that. So this is comparing them to all of the students in our school. And the state one is showing us what is the state target. So it has a very different look when I look at it. So doing that shows me what, how close we are or should be in alignment with what we're going to be asking them to do on the state test.
And is the difference on the state one that the dotted lines are in a different place?
That's because it's a score. So, right, because it's a score rather than this is percentile rank compared to other kids in their schools.
Right. And Julie has figured out the statewide pretty much tracks with our results on statewide tests. Interesting.
Yeah, so when I, when she showed me that today, I was like, my fault, but I wasn't going to put it in here. But it is very different to see, and certainly the literacy scores, we were right around the, it was very different as far as being right around where the state mark was as opposed to comparing our students to each other.
Right. Right now, these dotted lines are average in our district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, does that make sense? So the cool thing is, I know, I know. Believe me, today I was like, whoa, how did I not know this before? So as you look at these, you can see, you know, this is just information for me to be able to do, like I said, with case managers to talk about it. It's, and if we have students that are, you know, showing low growth and show low achievement, if we're doing services, then we need to look at the services and maybe what's not working? Do we need to change what we're doing? Do we need to make them more intense? If it's a student that doesn't have services, should we be talking about services? So this is a great conversation starter. Any questions about all of those?
Just to confirm, yep, we would like what, what our goal is, not our hope, but our goal
Yep.
is to have more circles in the upper right-hand quadrant. That's what you're working toward.
Yep, because that's high growth and high achievement. And if, as long, if it's not necessarily at high achievement yet, we at least want them to be on the right-hand side because that means they're growing faster than a year.
Right.
Yep. In the I E P no section for math twenty-two, twenty-three, should the percentages add up to one hundred percent?
No, because there are some students that take the alternate assessment, so they would not be going to do this, but let me see.
It's just the only section where the numbers don't.
Where it's six, nineteen, thirty, forty-five?
No.
No.
Where is it again? Okay, I see math fifty-two.
Oh, I'm on the L A. Sorry, I was going to get a L A.
Oh, so you're saying across, they don't add up? Eighteen?
No.
Those are way bigger.
Fifteen, sixty-one, sixty-seven, sixteen.
If you add all that together.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There, that's a good, oh, gosh. I'll ask Mike. I'm going to find it on Mike because he's not here. Thank you for listening back. Okay, and then the last part, because we're more than fifteen minutes, sorry, is just wanted to share some information. So every June, the A O E sends out through like a college in New York or something, survey out to parents of students with I E Ps, looking to get feedback. And they have a low response rate across the state as we do. But our response rate was higher than the state average, so we'll go with that. So I wanted to just share with you all what those are. So you, we have the questions and then this is the information that we just got within the last month. And then I added the results from last year just so you could see the difference. So this is a one to four scale, one being never, four being always. And the thing that I had to keep, I had to draw little arrows on my paper to remind me is that the one that is farthest on the right is actually two years ago as opposed to the one on the left is the most current one. So when you look at that way, we've shown growth and everything, but I kept thinking like, oh, wait. And then I'd be like, no, I'm reading it backwards. So those, there's a couple of slides with that. That just shows you what are the questions that are being asked. And then the last page just shows you the number. It just is what they show us. So we had twenty, a hundred and seventy-three mailed out and twenty-eight were returned. The year before that, so that was like a sixteen percent response rate. The year before that, we had about a twelve percent response rate statewide. They have an eight percent response rate. So none of those are great. We would love to have more input from parents. And as a student, a parent with a student with a disability, I know, I don't. And as a student with, a parent with a disability, I know I don't fill my house when it comes. So sorry, Essex, I'll work on that. Um, so trying to figure out how to, to get more parents to provide that input. Um, and I'm gonna take whatever data I have. So of the, the returned ones that we had two years ago and this year, um, uh twenty-two, twenty-three, we had sixty-three percent of the surveys that were returned that had the majority of responses that were always or often. And then this most recent one is seventy-nine percent. So again, it feels like even though it's a small data point, I'm gonna celebrate it because we're trending in the right direction.
What is the difference between these two? They both say twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
They're different questions.
Oh, there's more questions?
Yeah.
Okay, it's like a continuator. It's all the same.
It's all the same survey. It's just two questions. Yep. And then that's the end.
You have a magnifying glass.
I know, so I, we will put, I know, sorry. When you get the link, you can zoom it. Yeah, I know. And that's it.
Question. Yeah, thanks, Peggy Sue. Um, on that first slide, um, so there's like a forty-two and uh forty-two more students on I E Ps, um, which is a pretty significant increase. Um, and that's from, from new families, the very first slide.
Yep, there's twenty, so one fifty-six to one seventy-six.
But if you add up pre-K.
So there's one more in pre-K and then the bottom is students with five oh four plans. Was that, were you adding?
Oh, okay, sorry. So some I E Ps, some five oh fours.
So twenty-one more for, yes, with pre-K to twelve for I E Ps. And then, yeah, and then another for twenty-one that are five oh fours.
And yeah, okay. And you said that it's from families who moved into the district from?
Some of it, yeah, there is that, there was certainly a significant number of students that moved in um over the summer. Um, with, yeah, it's not all, obviously, there are some also students being newly identified. But that, there was enough of that, that it felt like we were, we're doing a lot of, when students move in from out of state especially, we have to do an evaluation under Vermont regs, even if they're eligible somewhere else. Um, and Lindsay was saying, wow, there's a lot of movement here. So, yes.
And is this forty-two in individual students or is there some overlap? Maybe there's a student that has both an I E P and a five oh four? No, these are all different, all forty-two.
Yeah.
Individual kids.
Yes. There, go ahead.
If kids are coming from like alternative education settings, homeschooling and other types of settings, do they have the same uh initial evaluation that someone coming from out of state does?
So we have a, what's called a child fine obligation to, if there are students in home study or if they are in independent schools in our towns. And there's a suspicion of a disability that we are um assessing them. And um so some of this number would include students that aren't necessary. Most of them are in our school, but we do have some students that are on home study or attending independent schools um within like the farm forest school, for example. If there are students there that there's a concern about a disability, then it's our obligation as the school district that their school is within to um evaluate them. The difference is they don't have um a right to special education services unless they enroll in the public school. So we have to find them and we have to say, if you come to public school, you know, you would get services, this is a need you have, but there is no entitlement for services if you are homeschooled or in an independent school. That you is parentally placed, different than the therapeutic schools that we.
Do any of those, are there incentives for any of those types of, so? I feel like there's a difference between homeschooling, strictly homeschooling and then homeschooling where there are a lot of alternative um opportunities. Is there any incentive for, incentive for educators in alternative settings to reach out to you?
Um.
Like, would they, would they know that they should be caught, reaching out to the district?
I, I think they do. We definitely have that, yeah. And there's like a very teeny tiny amount of money that's in our um federal special ed grant that is for students that are in home study or in an independent school. Like it's so tiny that, you know, it's like, but there is.
Wondering how people know to reach out.
Yeah, so part of what we have to do is we do notices to like doctors' offices and we put in the, you know, people read newspapers anymore. But anyway, we have to post and make sure that people are aware that this is part of our obligation. The thing that gets tricky is when kids live in Montpelier but attend a school like in Berry. So then Berry would actually be the district that's responsible for evaluating them. So that gets a little confusing for families, but it's based on the geographic location of the school that you were in.
And I, I was also wondering about the male, female breakdown on like the second slide.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a trend that is moving in any particular direction as far as you know, over the, over the years, over the decade, over the last ten years? Or is there, is that, is that a consistent, is it consistently that disproportionate that? Uh.
Um.
Have more?
I don't, I haven't looked at that, but my guess would be that that's pretty tip, that, you know, I think, yes, I think that's part of.
It is.
Yeah.
Nationally it is.
Yes, for sure. Yeah. Yes.
Um, thanks, Sue, really quick. And thank you very much. I really appreciate, I'm a geek and so I like the data. Um. If you were to zoom out, based on what you're seeing in these data.
Yeah.
Um, what is like one thing that you would like to like celebrate and what's one thing that um is concerning to you?
Uh, so celebrate, I think that's easy. I think um I look at the literacy um services that we have in place, the um training that we're doing with the teachers and training that the special educators have done. And I feel like we have done an amazing job in really upping all of um the uh understanding of literacy and um and we are seeing awesome results of a number of kids, a number of kids are no longer needing services. Or, you know, it's just, I think that's really been great. Um.
Particularly at Main Street Medical School.
Yes, for sure. Yep. Um, and um I also will celebrate um that there are, when I came to this district, there was a lot of tension, I would say, with um caregivers around special education. And I feel like there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of repair done to a lot of relationships. Um, and um I thi- think, um, you know, yeah. So that feels really good to me. I think that we have a lot of families and students that are feeling better about the experience they're getting. They're trusting more um that we are um able to figure out what their kids need and we're getting them that. Um, I would say that math is now the area that we're looking at as a district. And um the other thing that uh I still am trying to wrestle with is just kind of how to do this and the best way to maximize the expertise of people we have. Um, you know, we have a really, um, I would say, pretty incredible intervention system. And we have a lot of specialists um in our different tiers. And then we get to special educators and we're asking them to do everything and be experts in everything. And so, you know, trying to look at, is there more, a more efficient way to provide services and get that expertise and so that we're not burning out our amazing special educators? Um, so I would say that's something I'm still working on. And um I would say just uh as every other school in the country, also just trying to continue to work with Jess around how to support students um around just their social, emotional well-being so that they can access what we're asking them to access.
Excellent. Thank you. Further questions, Peggy Sue?
Oh, time to do something. Stop sharing.
Well, thank you again. This is super helpful and I really appreciate all your hard work and the, the extensive data. It's really um gives us a good picture of the work and the progress and I love the little bubble charts.
They're really fun.
No, they're fun and they give.
Julie showed me today, I was like, oh my gosh, what else do I not know? So that's the other great thing is, I would say, I have learned so much in just a couple of years around data. Um, and I feel like as the teams, I'm seeing so much use of data and opinion of data and so that's another celebration.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for us.
Yes, so now we are moving into the discussion of the Roxbury Village School. Um, and we have a potential decision to make and just for a quick recap. Um, we went, we've kind of been going through a process pretty much all fall. Uh, we started out with, I think, six options and um through a variety of, of input from the public. Um, at a meeting in, in September, I believe, uh reduced it to three options. Basically, one was to, um, let me just step back. For the contract merger agreement that both towns agreed to, uh, or twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, which?
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, twenty seventeen is the merger occurred in twenty eighteen. Okay. Um, the uh, you know, the two towns agreed that the school would stay open for a period of four years. And then after that period, depending on um, you know, whatever circumstances, the uh board could discontinue the use of that building as a school. Uh, that happened, as we all know, last year, given budget and other considerations. Uh, you know, and I think in a way that no one was happy about, but unfortunately, that was the situation we found ourselves in. Uh, we are now at a point where the ownership of the building is, is at issue and the contract governs that. Where if the board makes a determination that there is not a necessary use of the building, um, that the building is unnecessary for the educational use of the district. Um, it is then uh directed to offer the building back to the town for a dollar. The doc, the town is not under any obligation to take it back for, for a dollar. But the uh town originally gave the building to, or transferred the building to the district for a dollar. Um. Again, that the, the, the finding is that there is not a necessary use. It is not that there is not an educational use or, and it's not, if we make a finding that there is not a necessary use, it does not mean that we can not continue to use the building. Uh, it's just that the use is unnecessary for the operation of, of the school district. Um, and then the town basically can take the building if they, for a dollar, as long as it has uh some sort of kind of community or public use for five years. Uh, it then takes the ownership out right after five years. If within those five years, it changes it to a non-community use, uh, the town would be liable to the district for uh improvements made while the district owned the building, which I think are about the tune of.
Forty-five thousand, I think.
Yeah, approximately forty-five thousand. Do not quote me. It's, it's in that neighborhood. Um.
Forty-five to ninety thousand.
Forty-five to ninety thousand. And while community use is not defined in the um agreement, in the merger agreement, um, that, the parameters of that could likely be agreed on and any transfer back to the town. And it is likely that any sort of kind of public use would, would satisfy that, um, that provision. So uh high likelihood that the, the town could assume it without incurring the, the risk of, of those payments. Um, so we put out, we boiled it down to three options. The three options were that we uh off, we make a decision that the, there is not a necessary use. We offer it back to the town. We began those discussions. Uh, and we uh continue to maintain uh the building and also the current after-school programming until the details of that uh transfer are worked out. Uh, and the building goes back to the town. Uh, the second is, the second to contemplate the school or the district keeping that building. Uh, one, kind of running the existing after-care program. And the second would be uh some sort of expanded use of the building. Um, build, you know, based on that after-care program perhaps with, with more. Uh, and we said then solicited, you know, more couple of comment on those three options. Uh, and the overwhelming district-wide, and I say district-wide because it was both towns, uh, feedback on that, which of course is not determinative but informative of our decision tonight, uh, was to uh transfer the building back to Roxbury. And um, and uh, you know, maintain that building and the use of that building until that transfer is, is worked out. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at now. Um, and now we can, yeah, open it up to both, you know, any sort of board discussion, uh, comment uh and uh make a decision about whether or not we want to make a decision uh primarily on the necessity of the use of the building and, and start that process of transferring back to the town or not. So I will leave it there and if I left out details, uh, please feel free to fill in. Let me, yeah, I think they're most up to speed. Um, you know, it also, as was brought up tonight, there is a uh proposal to um, from a, a local private school to rent space in the building as well as um another small, I believe a small business.
Childcare center.
Childcare center. Um, and uh, you know, so that is something that either the district or the town uh could entertain as a potential use for that building. If the town did that, I think that would, I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that uh that would like to constitute a community use of the building. So um that is out there as well.
And I just want to make one correction. I'm sorry. I just pulled up Andrew's figures for capital improvements to make sure the board has the right information. The bathroom renovations there were about ninety K. The heat pumps were about seventy-five K. And the um, the kitchen was upgraded, but it wasn't included in the cost because it was right at the time of the merger. And remote D D C access is twenty-five K.
So it's just.
About one maybe.
Yeah, because it potentially two.
I'm doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Sorry, that was my fault. Can only hold so much stuff in my head.
Is, is the district not allowed to rent to a private school? Is it, or am I misconstruing something that we talked about weeks ago?
Uh, well, I think there's a, I mean, I think there's, I don't think we're prohibited from doing that. Uh, our, and living in a room, my understanding is our insurance company does not like the idea um in a big way.
They have strongly recommended against it.
Yes, uh, basically because the district would be liable for anything that happened at the, at the school, but not under control premises. Um, uh, the, the uh select board, which we also heard earlier, uh, is apparently poised to ask the town for a vote, for an advisory vote on whether or not to transfer the building. Uh, they also sent us a letter recently asking that we not lease the building. Um.
If, if we're going to plan to sell it.
If we're going to plan to sell it, that we not lease the building. Um. Jill.
Are the, is the, are the entities that are proposing a lease the same as the Bridges program?
No.
Okay.
No, it's.
Ours.
Yeah, it's the Vermont Farm and Forest School, which is a private school, which opened what, a few years ago, Red?
A while ago.
In my.
Maybe twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen.
So I just wanted to be, really understand, you know, the community input about the after-school Bridges program is not, that's our program.
That's our.
Okay.
Um, I definitely want to do right by Roxbury. Um, and I'm excited about these possibilities. Um, but um if, if the, if it goes till March to put it to a vote, um, are they gonna lose the possible renters and the interest of? They said we had to act within a couple of weeks or something. So March is many months away.
Uh, I have that question too, like, yeah, how important is it? Kind of be a town meeting vote if the select would make the decision.
That's, I think that's.
The select words to say that.
It's the select board's decision. So, um. Yeah, so I, I think that's, that's the select board's decision. So, yeah, I mean, they could move more quickly. Uh. Yeah.
Maybe because if we can't have these tenants because of insurance problems, it, it seems sort of ridiculous to lose two tenants, right? On some level because that was. On some level, because that would help support the building.
Yes, and that seems. It seems like something for the Roxbury to select for. To work out. It is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I understand my insurance concern, I also understand why they would want an advisory about, so like. Is it possible that? I mean, the the timeline just makes it difficult because we couldn't really. Rented them for like. Three months or whatever, and then just hope that. The town decides to buy the building and that.
I mean, my guess is that the town would have to work out something with the renters.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Maybe. Agree to provisionally lease depending on how the vote goes.
I just, I would love to be able to help with this, because it seems like such a wonderful thing for the building to be used for, it's just. Timeline.
Missy Doe, who is the owner of and. Operator of the Farman Forest School.
Hey, Judy Lusk, um, Missy. Asked that, and you have the letter from her. She asked that she be given a letter of intent by the end of January. And the reason for that, she said, was that she would be able to work out contracts with her teachers. Uh, because she might lose them if she doesn't get contracts, and so she, she actually would not be taking. Um, occupation of the building until the middle of August. And, but she. Does have other options that she's looking at, and it's very important to us that whoever it is, you or the select board. Make some kind of a gesture to her. And so are you saying that your insurance company has said that. She's a no-go if you were to own the building in August?
Yes, they've they've. Probably encourage us not to lease anyone, not in particular.
Yes, but.
Okay.
Town could have a different answer and and the town could arguably be in.
Now, is that because you're connected to the public school district? Or would would Roxbury run into the same problem with?
It's all because of the pub- a public.
I see, okay, yes.
Insurance company is an insurance company for all school districts.
Sure, okay.
And they want an answer for the town of Roxbury.
Got it, okay, well, um. If you were to offer the building sooner than town meeting day. Then I think that would maybe kick our select board into gear a little more.
I had, I was wondering.
Yes, because. You know, we were at the meeting and we, the other night, and we felt as though they were moving in the right direction, but. It's a tough go, so, uh, but if you were to come up with a date tonight. To say on this date, we plan to offer the building to the town of Roxbury, then. That's gonna get the ball rolling, that's what I think. You want Tom?
Only because you can't be heard at home without being by the microphone.
So I'm just gonna read for to you from our report. So what needs to happen? First, the select board needs to request a decision from the MRS Board, MRPS Board as soon as possible. Okay. Both of the rental possibilities are time-sensitive, letters of intent need to be offered to them by January thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. We're asking that the select board make a decision at the November eighteenth meeting to move ahead with a meeting with the MRPS Board. To work out a timeline, so the rental. Um, options are not lost. If the MRPS Board issued a letter of intent to offer the building to the town by a specific date. The select board would would then offer the potential SEs a letter of intent to rent based on voter approval. To take the building back. That was back, that was before we realized that they don't really need voter approval. Our select board is only doing that for cover. Uh, you know, they don't wanna make the decision, they want the town to make it. And also they have to vote a budget to support the building because. You know, if this falls through, we have to put the keep the heat on. So so really, it the timeline has to be that you you offer the town. The building back. They agreed to take the building back on town meeting day, in the meantime, they said they can give a letter of intent to rent. And Missy can contract with her teachers based on that intent, because she's not. Interested in doing anything until August, so, you know, that's the timeline it needs to happen, so that's why I was hoping that tonight. You guys would decide. Make that decision. Maybe you're not gonna use some today's date, but you could say as of, um. You know, December fifteenth. We're gonna offer it to the town and you have until town meeting day to work out the details, I mean, I don't know how many details that can be worked out, but you got months. The, you know, two or three months there, so, you know. It could ea- it seems to me it could easily be done, um. I don't think it took that long to take the building, I don't see how long it could take to take the building back. But that's, that's what we're looking at, and that's what we're asking.
It's like, uh, Renee wants to get in, uh, Renee is the. Chair of the select board, so, uh, go for it.
Yes, hello, can you hear me? Okay, hi, uh, Renee Bouchard, uh, uh, Chair of the Roxbury Select Board. So at our meeting on Monday evening, uh, which I think was a very good meeting, there was good discussion, et cetera. And it was helpful that Missy was there, uh, from the Farman Forest School. Uh, two things to note about the letters that we discussed at the meeting. The first letter from the, uh, childcare center is not, uh, time-dependent. From the standpoint that they're a firm that just started business on October seventh. And in the letter itself, it did not set a deadline, and the model for a school like that would be. You know, twelve months, right, uh, childcare is not, doesn't operate on the same business model as. The Fireman Forest, which should be September to June sort of normal school, having to get teachers, et cetera. And Missy was, uh. Was open at to listening and hearing and appreciated. Our desire to have the voters, uh, provide guidance. On on the school and what we do. You know, the fact is, is, you know, we're not just trying to get cover. I think it's important for the, uh. For the voters to provide us with some direction, and that direction is, you know, we have. We want direction on whether we should buy the building, which I think is a, quite frankly, is a no-brainer because. Um, you know, we really want to get possession of our town hall. Uh, and as I said in our letter, you know, we really highly value the, uh. The after-school program, it's like so helpful for our parents, and it's very important to the community, so. Anyway, we want a town vote so that that to provide guidance to the board. And then we also need to look at other options, you know, there are multiple options. Tom and his group did a great job putting together one option. Uh, but we have, they represented, you know, twelve to twenty people with their opinions, and. You know, we represent six hundred, and we have other people who have voiced other ideas. And, you know, um, we we wanna synthesize it down and just put it, have a. Good discussion with folks and get a vote on other options, and we don't wanna be locked into one. And that is why we requested that, if you were to be offering the building back in the near term. That to not enter into any leases at this time.
No, thank you, Renee, that's that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, um, yeah, I'm I'm extremely sympathetic to the concerns of of the Roxbury community for sure. Um, I I think our job really is. Only to think about the the educational use of the building, um, and. And determine whether or not we feel it's necessary, beyond that, it, yeah, I mean, again, I'm sympathetic, but that's not our role. Um, I I've been thrilled to hear. The feedback from the Roxbury families about bridges, um. It's been nice to hear positive feedback from, um, that the Roxbury residents, um, around the school. Um, most of my time on the board, it it hasn't been that way. Um, I I just wanna, one, like, I don't. I I heard the the plea to act quickly, um, and I just wanna remind folks that's how we got into this situation, um. And I think being mindful and thoughtful, um, about the decision, um. Really will lead us to a better, um, outcome. And, um. Yeah, I just, one question I have, and I don't know that we have an answer, is if there was any. Like, the the Bridges program i- is thriving, right, that is, there's, that's clear, um, I. I wouldn't wanna do anything at this point to preclude that from continuing. Um, and so if, yeah, and so I just wanna consider that as as we move forward.
I don't, I don't, I I mean, I think we definitely should offer it to the town for a dollar, and. That that doesn't seem like a question in my mind, it seems like there's a lot of momentum for Bridges and and that will continue. Um, and I I personally think the board should should include that in the budget, I don't know if we're planning not to. The only question is about timeline and, you know, whatever makes sense for the town, it's a good timeline for me. And, yeah. I don't see it as complicated, but it's personal opinion.
Yeah.
Um, I was just gonna make a motion. So I I move that the board finds there is no necessary use of Roxbury Village School. For the educational purposes of the district.
I second that.
Sure, let's have a for discussion, I guess, is there will be some.
Yeah, just to be clear, that's why I made the motion, is so that we're discussing an actual thing.
Yes, no.
And also, I believe it's the right course of action.
Yes, and it's, yeah, no.
Because I think it will get us to the result that I think, as far as I can tell. We as a board want, which is for Roxbury to be able to have agency over this. Space and make it the community center that they envision it to be.
As we all know, I can't vote, um, but if I could, I would be in favor of this motion, and I think Jake said it very well, and I can't say it better. And I hope we. Move to sell this building to the town.
Right.
I'd like to second that and say that at the Roxbury meeting, um. A few weeks ago, I really appreciated Dottie's, um, beautiful presentation of what you would like the the building to look like. Because that seems excellent for the students and for the community, and I hope that we're able to do that for. The school and the community, because it's a beautiful representation of what the building can look like.
Is there a reason why? So. I'm a little concerned that if we vote, there's no educate, necessary educational use. The town votes in on town meeting day and the result is to not take ownership. Have we painted ourselves into a corner?
Nope. There's, there's nothing prescribed that we have to do, we can continue.
At that point, we could.
Keep the building as long as we want, we could sell it to another owner.
And from what I understand, the select board could still say, we'll take it anyway, even if there's, even if the town doesn't vote.
Yeah.
In favor of taking the building, but. So it seems like there's still lots of options on the table even after town meeting day. And it's a good clarifying question, yeah.
Yes, that is a good clarifying question. But we, no, we are not, we are not obligated to say seek and to seek another seller, to block all the building, we can continue to use it.
Yeah, e- except we've. Again, my concern would be, we we've on record said there's no necessary educational use.
For the operation of the district.
For the districts, then we'll come back and say, well. Yeah, how do we justify continuing to fu- fund? The building and if there's no necessary educational use.
And we're still holding on to it?
Yeah.
Cause there might be a desirable educational use, even if it's not necessary.
Yeah, saying that it's not necessary, I think, doesn't mean that it wouldn't be beneficial, um, and also. I think there are a lot more factors at play here than. Just whether or not the educational use of the building is necessary, I mean, I know that's what the law says, and I wouldn't wanna go against that, but, um. We're clearly taking into account the possible uses and the desires of the Roxbury community, as I think we should. So it's not that that's a pure formality, and I do understand your concern, but. I mean, from my understanding of the law. Making this decision would not prevent us from. Using the building if Roxbury decides not to purchase it and.
However, Roxbury can't take the building without a vote from you first.
And also in terms of. I do appreciate the desire to have a. Thorough and thoughtful process, um. But I I think that when we think about like taking our time, it's possible to take too much time because. The time that we use is time that the town of Roxbury doesn't have to. Plan for the use of this building and to put into effect. The wonderful plant plants that we've had presented to us for its community use.
I mean, that's not what the. Board chair just said. Right, the board chair just said that there's nothing time-dependent in the, at the childcare offer. And then also said that the farming school, Farm Wilderness School, um, yeah, I just. I'm a little. I, there's a lot of people giving legal advice tonight. And I'm not cons-. I'm not necessarily sure that it's that easy, and I just, I feel like. Voting right now puts us in a situation that that limits our future options. Particularly around Bridges. I I would hate to do something today that then precludes Bridges from continuing. Next year.
Is Bridges considered an educational use?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're saying that. There's no use for Bridges?
No.
No, that's not what.
No, it's it's a necessary, I mean. Yeah.
The way.
There's a lot of things at the school that are beneficial uses that I think you could probably say are are not necessarily necessary.
The way that I read and understand the necessary use for the district is, could the district function without it? The with the out the actual building, and the answer to that in my mind is yes, the district can function without it, that doesn't necessarily mean. We would say, oh, therefore we shouldn't have Bridges, I think we can do, I do believe we can do both. Say, we have no necessary use for the building in order for the district to function. And continue offering an enrichment program in that building. Assume, well, and, you know, for as long as we want to to do that.
Yeah.
Well, sorry, I, what Lynn just said, you know, if we if we no longer own the building. It's not about how long we want to offer it, it's how long the owner of that building wants us to continue.
Which would be the, which would arguably be the town. So it'd be, it would be a Roxbury community choice about whether or not they wanted to continue that program, not district choice. And I I think part of what we wanna do here is. Give Roxbury back control of that building so they can continue. The vision for it, and they have several visions for it, that that suits the town.
I think they wanna make some plans, and.
Yeah.
We meet every two weeks, and I don't wanna. Push this down a month or something.
Yeah, right.
I think. Of of of. There's a great deal of fear that somehow this opportunity will fall through and that the district will end up selling the building to a developer. That's on one hand, on another, another fear, I. That's on one hand. On another, another fear I think is, um, that immediately the town will be, will be kind of on the hook for, I don't know what the cost of maintenance for a year is, without an adequate plan to have revenue. And so I wonder if, if some of this is dependent on a vote in March. By that point, you know, we've cooked our budget. If the cost of maintenance of the building will be in the budget for this year, so that this transaction can occur, because I'm not sure, I, I'm, I want this to be a vibrant community center for our community, there's a lot of energy. Um, but there may be a need for Roxbury to, to come up with a, a town, another town position, for instance, to administer over the building, to, to, to maintain leases and to meet people's needs. There may be a need to establish an insurance um, policy so that they can lease the building. There are a lot of factors, I think, that are, that can deli-, that can make, that can prolong. In addition to the March vote, there are a lot of other factors that I, that, that, um, that I worry about, like, it may not, it may be that without the right insurance policy, the town can't rent the, um, the building to anyone anyway. Um, that's a possibility. I just don't know all factors, and so that, that question of the, of whether or not because we have this slight uncertainty about the vote, whether the cost of maintaining the building for this additional year would remain in our budget. Um, well, this process plays out, cause it does feel like it could take some time to
You're asking whether or not we would leave Roxbury Village School maintenance in the budget?
Yes, for, for this additional year.
I think we don't.
Our legal team told us that this, and regardless of what you, if you vote tonight, the board votes tonight, that to offer the building back to Roxbury, a real estate transaction takes a considerable amount of time, and this is what it is. A real estate transaction at that point. And therefore, we know, because we want that building to be maintained in the way that it is now, we are already planning for that to be in our budget, because it, a real estate transaction takes a considerable amount of time.
But, and that, this has all been said in meetings, but there's been, I really feel like it's really important that this board really states that clearly, both to, to both communities, because I know that there are folks in Montpelier that really don't want to continue to pay for the maintenance of the building. But the transaction takes time.
Yep.
And to get it into the hands of Roxbury, and for Roxbury to be able to, to administrate that building and to, and to find revenue sources for that building, that process, I think, will also take some time, which we, we certainly have time if it goes until, you know, next budget season. I think that's a lot of time, and it's been a long time with a lot of uncertainty with us trying to figure out educational use. You know, I, I was worried about arguing that Bridges is educational use, but I love the idea that it's the same educational use as our athletic programs in our, in our high school, and our enrichment programs at the middle school. It's, it's the kind of enrichment that a, a well-rounded school system provides to students and families. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're required to keep it, uh, as a, as a piece of property in the district.
Yeah, I'd just like to say one thing, and that is, I appreciate what you're saying, Brett, or Brett, but the problem is that unless somebody makes a decision, none of this can go forward.
And.
Okay?
Yeah.
None of this can go forward. You can, you can conjecture, you can chase yourself around in a circle from now on, so.
And you can be impatient with every public entity that you have to work.
Do you have a question?
I do.
Um, I'm not sure what a considerable amount of time means. We have seven months still on this budget covering the Roxbury cost. So is it gonna take a year and a half for this to go through or?
Well, I want you to think about when you've sold a house. Right, like, that would be my experience here in selling a building, is when I've sold a home. Right, uh, and that's a house. We're talking about a school building. Um, so I would imagine that lawyers would have to get together to make a contract of exactly when the money would stop from the district, and when the town of Roxbury would be, that would be part of the negotiation. Just like when I sold my house, part of the negotiation was what I was going to fix and what I wasn't going to fix as part of the sale. So there's a, and a school building is considerably bigger than a house. So that negotiation between our lawyer, our legal team and the town of Roxbury's legal team, should the board decide to vote to send it back to Roxbury or offer it back to Roxbury, takes time to do.
Yeah, also, also just before Joe, the, yeah, the sooner we begin, the sooner.
Our legal teams can start.
As soon as it starts, it can be finalized. And, you know, if we budget for, you know, you're right, we have seven months left, if we budget for another year, if that transfer takes place earlier, you know, we can either recapture those funds, we can work out some sort of a deal with Roxbury. You know, if, if it's not in the budget, then we have to pull from somewhere, if, if the deal takes longer. I would suspect if, you know, as, as long as Roxbury says yes, that if we started working on this soon, it would not take forever. But I could be wrong. Joe.
Yeah, I, I just really think it's important that we move and be clear about our intention. I don't see us changing our mind about the use of the building, and so I think the sooner we can signal to the community, um, and the sooner we are not micromanaging or trying to, you know, determine or make decisions about what they do with it after that, I, I feel like we're getting way further past, we are a school board responsible for the school district and the students and the buildings in that district. I think it's pretty clear, I'm, you know, we're all still like recovering from the really hard decision to close the elementary school, so the idea of keeping the building or like sort of perpetuating the uncertainty, um, when we've already had to make that really terrible decision and we're going into another challenging budget year, I don't see any benefit to continuing to sort of prolong the, um, uncertainty, and I think there's a lot of benefit to providing certainty, especially since we're hearing pretty universally, the timeline is a little different, but there's clearly very much interest in that community in using this building from the select board, from the community, from private entities, so like, I, it doesn't seem like we need to, we need to concern ourselves or try to micromanage what happens with it. I feel very strongly that we need to be like really clear to the community. Absolutely, so that they know what they can plan for. That's my decision.
Yeah.
And then I just also wanted to add that from a, um, deliberative, um, point of view, we tried to do a great deal of due diligence in considering what options we could have used the building for and, and left a lot of space for questions from the board, questions from the community, input from the community. And I, I believe that it's important to make a decision thoughtfully, absolutely. And I also don't think that we can expect to know, like, all the answers before we make a decision. There are just sometimes unknowns that we have to be able to, um, say, with faith and understanding and some like, you know, continuation of um, community activity, uh, that it, things will work themselves out. And so in, in my mind, I think we have done enough of the deliberations and enough of the due diligence to know that this is the, this is the best possible path forward for our entire community, which is to um, make this finding and then, which kicks off our, um, ability to offer it to the town.
Yeah.
Um, and then just because I have the floor, I also wanted to say to the three of you who are here, representing all the, you know, so many people in your community, how im- so very impressed I am with the capital A activism that we've seen from Roxbury and how, um, just so, I'm just so, um, blown away by the amount of effort and time and work that you have put into to creating a vision and to, to continuing to try and see it through, so I just wanted to say, blah.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I, I echo all of that, and I just, I just, I read it, I think it's just, I think it's fair for us to make clear our intent to the town of Roxbury, um, and not kind of add to any speculation that the district may keep the building, it may not keep the building.
Yeah, because after that, it's our, you know.
Yeah, after that, it will be.
It's on us.
It's, yeah. Um, I'm inclined to call a vote unless there's further comments.
I think I'm probably vote no on it. I think that the after-school programs are really a necessary part of our, um, academic offerings, our educational offerings in this district. And I think it would be a really good idea to, um, negotiate a little bit more directly with the town. Um, today, I think we heard a lot about letters that we haven't seen about different positions of insurance companies, about different ideas. I, I really, I'm, I'm not sure I could follow all of it, to be honest. Um, I very much support moving forward, uh, with discussions with Roxbury to find a solution that works for both towns. I think a direct engagement with our chair and the select board chair to find that solution, whether that be, you know, some kind of uh, opportunity for us to continue the Bridges program in a Roxbury-owned town, um, would be a wise use of ti- of time, and I think that the, a vote today doesn't give us the opportunity to offer it, it commits us to it, and it, it kind of we're, we're committed to a, a path now, and I'm, I'm not sure I even understand like what the terms of the offer would be. Um, I recognize that there's, uh, one of those terms would be a dollar. Um, but.
About the after-school program? Did you, you didn't get a chance to look at this, but there is space there for the, for the after-school program, and people want it. So it's not, I, you know, we put in space for the town, space for after-school, space for Vermont Farm and Forest, and also Little Sunshine, which is a preschool full day, and it's a need that the community's all around need, because there's not enough childcare for full day.
Yeah.
So you're, you're serving many places by voting yes. Anybody else have questions?
I mean, are you saying you, you don't, you're worried that?
If the town owned it, they would end the Bridges program?
No, we that's not.
No idea.
Um, it seems very, very unlikely. So. Very, very unlikely to me.
It's a hugely popular program.
Joe?
Um, just a little brief reminder of the history is that when we were first deliberating as a board, like a year ago, maybe less than a year ago, about closing the school, a lot of people came to us and asked us for more time and more time and more time, and we really weren't able to do that. And so now, in less than half a year, folks have come up with like a very passionate, supportive plan. And then we are considering saying, well, now we don't, like, that feels very disingenuine when, when I think they've actually come back. The community has, has rallied and has a plan. You know, so I don't often talk, come, but, you know, the jerking around, it does feel like if we don't, you know, we've, we've gone through the process, we were not able to give more time last year. Even if it's an informal, like, it's a vote that we know that this is our intent, I, I think we owe it to the community to signal that. Thank you.
I, I think the select board in Roxbury can't start the process of understanding what it looks like to take ownership until the this, this entity says we don't have a necessary educational use, which we already agreed, the enrichment program is a wonderful thing that I think we all support, that we can continue to support and could potentially, it's been discussed, pay to lease space. And the select board has said, of all the things that have been offered, that's the one thing that really, really, we absolutely know is a hundred percent go. Because all of this is wonderful, but there are timelines and there are factors and there are things that might, but none of that can be determined unless the select board has a yes, where we, we wanna sell it back. If we control it, we can't, we keep, the select board can't, can't, can't maneuver because we can't sign leases, that's what they're saying.
And I think we can signal that, that we really wanna engage in this. I really think we can.
We don't all have.
Yeah, yeah.
Disagrees with us, I. But that's okay.
So.
Tim and I have disagreed before, and we probably will again.
Yes, I think we have complied with Robert's rules and had ample discussion. I'm gonna call a vote. Um, since it seems like there is probably not unanimity, um.
And as formality, we're, we're literally quoting, the motion is literally quoting from the original merger agreements that makes, the first step is that this board makes the determination, they're not able to use that for educational purposes, that particular building as part of the district. And then is there a second? Okay.
There was a second, Jake seconded.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, are you asking?
And then I was wondering, there was a second motion that happened, but I'll wait.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
So, there's, there's a second on the motion, um, so I'll take a vote on the motion, I'll say I, also raise your hand, so I can do a vote count.
Okay, state the motion. The motion is that we find there is no necessary educational use for the function of the district. Okay, doesn't have anything to do with the part that says sell it for a dollar? There's, that's, that's, that's in the motion, but then that's what happens after.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
All those in favor, say aye. So it's two, 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 one, I'm gonna vote as well, so that will be two. All those opposed? So the ayes have it by a eleven to four. Thank you, thank you so much for your hard work, thank you for your patience. Yes, you're, yeah.
It all plays out. Keep it up. Yes.
Alright, so next, um, community engagement.
Anna, Anna, Flare.
Okay.
Anna Flare. How does it feel?
Good. It also feels good to be under a blanket, watching you all on TV, but it feels great to be here. Thank you for having me. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
I did not print this, um, apologize. Alright, so, what a discussion to follow. Um, so I am Anna Hipco, I'm our executive assistant to Libby and our communications coordinator for the district. It's nice to see you all in person. Um, so I'll try to be brief, since we're at eight forty already. Um, communications and engagement around the budget. So, none of this, I presume, will be new to you in terms of what is a communications and engagement plan, but here's how I think about it. I think about it in two buckets. What's our strategy? The context for why we're doing it, the main messages, elevator speeches and timeline, and then the implementation of it. Who are our target, our target audiences? Who are the messages that help spread our main messa- messengers, who help spread that message? And how? What are our communication cha- communication channels? And then the tangibles are things like flyers and videos and posters and all the pretty stuff. And the feedback is how do we know what we're doing, that we are executing the strategy that we have worked on? So that's how I think about things. Um, this is a total draft strategy, and I'm happy to continue this discussion after, after you have a time to um, review this, but from my perspective, the context is that we want all to have input and as to what in, what is, what is not prioritized in a budget. And that we want all to understand how and why decisions were made. Um, from my perspective, the main messages that I've heard through past budget seasons and as you work through your, um, indicators for success, um, are share our successes to show the impact of your tax dollars. That's easy to do. We have a lot of great things going on here in our school district, so let's share that to communicate what you're voting on. Simplify the complex budget process and drin- drill down to individual impact when possible. Um, it's incredibly complex and got even more complex with LTW ADM last year, um, as we're all familiar. Um, seek and consider the voice of the community by offering intentional and equitable opportunities to learn and engage. Um, I think this is where a lot of the implementation comes in, and then approve a proposed budget that reflects the voice of the community that we've heard, considers the impact of, on taxpayers, both for the factors in our control and outside of our control, and then ensures funding to support the priorities that we defined at the last meeting and that we'll continue to define. So, per timeline, I think about it in two phases. First, inform and engage now until January twenty second, when the timeline says is our last draft and we need to approve the warning. And January twenty second to March fourth, Town Meeting Day, where we're more on the inform and vote campaign side of it. So, implementation, the, the who. So target audiences. So implementation, the the who, so target audiences. Budget communications is kind of all all things at it. So a lot of this is going to be utilize all channels, all target audiences, not all of our communications plans are that, of course. Uh, but all internal staff, students, caregivers, external communities in Montpelier and Roxbury. Our messengers, our primary messengers are the school board and our administration, and our informal kind of messengers are all of our target audiences, all of our partners. Everyone can be a messenger if we communicate effectively. Um, so we'll dive into groups a little bit later, but I want to ask, I have some big green questions throughout my presentation, there are kind of questions for the board. And in thinking about our target audiences and strategy, I wanted to give you an insight into some voter data that I looked at. So apologize, this is so small. Um, so budget history, we saw this last presentation, this was the slide deck from the previous presentation where we saw past budgets, the tax rates, overall percentage. And so I expanded that a little bit further to look at, what was the date of the vote, how many voters voted yes and no in each town? How did, how, by how much did it pass or not? Um, what were some factors in various years that we might want to consider? Um, and then some statistics, um, average turnout between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty five uh, between towns and average voter, uh, of those voters who voted yes on town meeting day. And for this second little bucket, I excluded twenty twenty five, just to see if last year's um, budget season swayed things a little bit, because it was much more complex and the tax rates were predicted to be so much higher, so. I think you will see that I found that it more Montpelier voters voted, uh, the average Montpelier voters voting yes increased when we excluded last year, was higher when we excluded last year. And between Roxbury was about the same voting yes across all of those years. Um, turnout was pretty similar. Looking for that voter data, so we can pull the, um, I don't think they're called the grand list, but we can see who the registered voters are in every town, when they voted, obviously not how they voted, but when and how they voted um, in person or via the absentee ballot. So some of this, I would hope informs our strategy. Just to call out some highlights here, I, and a caveat to this, I was unable to obtain, um, all of the voter records from Roxbury, but I hope to do so, and I'll add that in here at that time. But if we're looking just at Rox, at Montpelier for the March town meeting day vote and the April second April vote, I'm sorry, this is so small up there. Forty-five percent of active registered voters um, in Montpelier voted on town meeting day. So less than half of the registered voters voted on town meeting day. Twenty-five percent voted in April, so even less. Um, twenty-six percent voted via absentee ballot on town for town meeting day, thirty-six percent for April. So I think this is telling us, part of our strategy might be your vote matters, encouraging people to vote. There's a pretty good registered to vote, uh, percentage, but only half are. So your vote matters, get out there and vote. And for ourselves, communicate early, because a a good chunk is voting via absentee ballot. Yeah, go ahead.
Just a really quick clarification. So the column that you, column E that you've got highlighted.
Yep.
That's all the votes, of all the votes casted, it was only forty-five percent out of registered voters. And then of that forty-five percent, um, twenty-six percent of them were absentee. So it's not twenty-six percent of all.
Yep, forty-five, yep, twenty-six percent of the forty-five percent who voted, voted the absentee, same same here and here. Um, and then comparing March to April overall, uh, forty-five percent less of the registered voters voted, excuse me. Yes, forty-five percent less people voted overall on the second vote. Um, so keep those numbers in the back of your mind. Um, and then we can further dive into this data if we'd like to, we have the names. We could identify out of our target, some of our target audiences, caregiver, staff and students. How, what percentage of our caregivers voted? What percentage voted on town meeting day versus April? How many did so via absentee ballot? Um, how many didn't vote on town meeting day, who did vote in April? Was there any igniting of folks who might have thought it's okay on town meeting day, and then, oh, no, I really, my voice does matter, I need to vote in April. I think all those would be incredibly insightful, and we have our lists and we have the grand list, so let's do some comparison and find out if there's more strategy there. And then I was also thinking, can we compare that to who voted in this past presidential election? Just to see how big turnout shifts when we're talking about national versus a local election. Uh, so that's my quick glimpse into my deep dive of voter, uh, turnout and strategy. Communication channels, the how. So I think of them in three buckets, digital, prints and events. And the channels for digital are pretty straightforward, social media, Front Porch Forum, district and mass messaging, that's our parent square. Um, and our website, landing pages, that kind of thing. Print, newspapers, mass mailings to our school community or to the wider community, we could utilize the post office and a postcard to everybody in every town. An option, or canvassing, equipping our teachers, schools, public places, posting posters, flyers, that kind of thing. And then events, one-on-one or group events, tabling, coffee chats. You get the examples. And then tangibles are the thing that I think some folks jump to first when thinking about communications, I think of them last. What are they supporting? And um, so tangibles, examples, infographics, videos, podcasts, letters to the editor. I mean, you know all the examples, but those are everything in our wheelhouse that we've done before and can do again and expand upon. And of course, when we think about tangibles too, there's one of me and so many of you, we have to make them doable to execute, right? And they can be used across events. A digital asset can be printed or optimized to hand out at an event, because we're not recreating every tangible for every channel. Further thinking about tangibles, I want to highlight that we will always follow the rules of print and digital accessibility. I've linked a little presentation I did for our administrators here that you're welcome to look at. But that's things like alt text and captions on videos and just ensuring that anybody accessing our materials has the ability to read it, listen to it, interpret it, however they so need to. And they'll be optimized and utilized across different channels to what I was talking about before. We're not creating a ton of stuff. So some visuals of what that fun stuff might look like, I created this little logo this morning, this is all draft. But how are we really going to define that it's budget season, this is something to pay attention to, and make it look connected to our district? So this was my little fun thing this morning. Um, I uh, want to put a QR code on anything we do print, so anybody can scan that QR code and go to our budget landing page. And that budget landing page I propose is our home base for everything that we do, and we're funneling people there all the time, because we have options to update that and you get that. Uh, but this is another example of how assets look very similar across the board. Um, we might hand out, excuse me, uh, hand out a flyer um, at the table, this might be what we post on our social media. Or um, and then that feedback step of the of the implementation phase. Um, engagement metrics, we've got a lot of digital metrics at our fingertips, our our web traffic, our social media engagement. Um, Parent Square has a lot of analytics into who opens, clicks, reads all of our newsletters. We can really go really deep with all of that. Um, and then events, I would propose that we do a simple report form, that the host of the event could say who attended, what was the anecdotal anecdotal sort of feedback tracked? And in that way, we can see, are we being successful at attracting attendance to our events and was it a successful event? And then feedback, of course, from our target audiences on our landing page and that QR code that will link to it and anything we put out, I propose we send a quick poll survey. What are we not answering? What are you still wondering about? Um, so that we can continue to beef up our FAQ documents and communicate what's still not clear in real time. And anecdotal, we get a ton of it to board members, to all of our staff, from porch forum post responses, of course, emails to the school board at um, and then from our community partners too. This is just a quick screenshot, I know it's really small, but it shows uh, the day before the April thirtieth vote, we had a hundred and fifty visitors to our budget webpage, which was the most ever. Um, this tracks around two to three people a day on the average uh, timeline. So we can compare last budget season, December to May, to this budget season, see if we did a good job at increasing traffic to that landing page. Town meeting day is right around here. Oops, excuse me, sorry. And we'll put there. And then this document, don't get overwhelmed, but I started to list the groups who we have connections with already, who we might be missing. Um, we've got a lot of community partners already, we've got our caregivers alliances, um, where uh, we've got our town representatives, um, lots of different groups, we've got in Roxbury and Montpelier uh, Root, the Roxbury Roots, Roxbury Rising, um, lots of locations, businesses, free libraries, all those great places. I think we really need to strategically uh, connect with those groups and and host events or canvas at their locations, or um, do things to intentionally connect with all of the places that our target audience, everybody, uh, patrons, visitors engages with, engages with, excuse me. Um, and then this fun document that is going to look very small is a list of everything that's going to happen between now, November twentieth and March fourth, town meeting day. And this was Libby and I's way of thinking about what events do we know is, everything in yellow is kind of draft. And then everything in white we know is happening. We know we're sending school newsletters every week from our principals, there's going to be a standing budget area in those newsletters from here until March. Uh, we do the Front Porch Forum posts, we started the synopses, synopses last time, doing a summary of each board meetings on Front Porch Forum, in addition to warning the meeting on Front Porch Forum. I put things on here like, um, in the draft areas, um, host more staff forums. Uh, additional print things, maybe tabling at some of those businesses we looked at previously. Uh, hosting more community forums at senior centers, other meeting, others, meetings and events. All that kind of stuff. I even asked Matt Link about like, what's going to be the most popular basketball game this winter before town meeting day? So that's on here too. We should have a table there, we should have something there, right? So yeah, so that's how I thought about it, and then how does this mean, and if we're looking at numbers, so I gave, one is engage, one is we reach them, so here's target audiences in these columns. Zero is that event, that channel doesn't reach them historically. Um, what supports did we offer? Do we see an uptick in attendance if we offer childcare and food? Do we not? Do we want to make, ensure that we have at least three of those offerings during budget season to trial that? Um, and then are we offering that feedback survey or some sort of option to give feedback? Um, so what I thought about it that way, it produces some, some totals that I think we can discuss. And in terms of engagement, is there a direct opportunity to discuss and give feedback? I would consider public comment an engagement opportunity, a community forum an engagement opportunity. A social media post, though, is not an engagement opportunity. We're informing by way of making that post. Um, so that's that column. Um, so with what we've had listed, I I think you'll see we've got lots of opportunities to learn, lots of opportunities to engage, and maybe we want to increase that as we think about some of these more drafty things over here. Who, who have we not done a great job at reaching historically, um, and want to be more strategic about this year? But the moral of the story that I want to get at is, we are going to reach all of our target audiences. Uh, we are going to offer supports, we're going to request feedback, and we're going to continually tweak this as we go, uh, to ensure that we're reaching our goal. Um, so that's my presentation. I know that leaves a lot open for discussion. Where do you all want to get involved? Um, I have some ideas, but
Well, first off, fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Uh, a lot of hard work and just really informative, it's really good. I do a lot of of comms in my non Wednesday night job. And like having this type of data about how to target people and what they, you know, what they react to, where they are. It's super helpful to to getting messages out and connecting people, so. Um, this is really, really good. And I will open up a discussion, and I kind of just as a open thing, or as a invitation for the board, I think we should all probably try to think of like two or three things we can all do during this process, you know, to to engage, uh, you know, a table at the basketball game or, um, you know, meeting, meeting with the senior center or something of that nature. Because I think if we team up and do that, that'll increase our touches. So, I want to put up the questions, and also thank you for staying late.
We open, um, in addition to some of those events and tabling type things, I'd also like to expand to think about, like, do we want to identify, uh, Friends of Montpelier Schools Facebook page, sort of uh, school board rep who might share all the things from our district onto that page. Something simple, digital, not totally simple, but digital, so it doesn't require too much time. Um, Jim has a government for Front Porch Forum account, that is our school board from our for porch forum account. Libby and the district have one as well, so how do we want to utilize those differently? Yeah, so I think, I think how you can be involved is beyond just events and physical presence in places.
It it immediately occurred to me, our table at the basketball game won't be very close to the court. But places where my kids would have social, you know, to have cultural and social opportunities are places where I would be happy to you know, th- those types of events where I'm at a table somewhere and my kids are not too far, but you know, well, just in having experiences that they won't have, I mean, which we're trying to do all the time, but coming to concerts here, um, you know, anything here that we would go to anyway. I'll miss seeing the show, but like, I'm there for my kid's experience and I could be at a table. You know, that's that type of thing would would appeal to me for sure.
A lot, a lot of what you shared with us, it felt like was the, like, getting the message out. What what were the things where the opportunities for, like, sitting, getting, getting input in?
Yeah, so Yeah, we look at the calendar again, so there's school board meeting, so
Yeah.
Um, let's see, everything before January twenty second. So things that I counted as engagement opportunities would of course be the board meetings. Um, coffee and chats with Libby, those are happening monthly in both Montpelier and Roxbury. Caregiver council meetings happening at district level and uh, school level, anybody is welcome to reach out to the principals or Libby to join those. Um, there are groups established, um, but all are welcome. Uh, caregiver councils, let's see, some other ones.
We have community forums in there too.
Yeah, and then we had thought about some additional community forums that we might have not done before. Um, Jess Murray has her Strategic Anti-Racism and Equity Plan Community Night coming up, that's that's one.
Uh, let's see. About ramping it up, so so in December, having um, slightly less kind of push and advocacy and then ramping up the advocacy in January, February.
We also want to get, yeah, I I mean, hopefully people know emailing the school board is a way of way, giving us input and um, school board meetings are a way of giving us input, and maybe what we could do is as we did last year, we would do a budget presentation and then conduct sort of community forum type setting for members of the community to say, to give, to say, oh, well, you know, I don't understand that pie chart, or you know, can you break that down for me a little bit more? We should ask these questions or whatever, yeah.
Prior to January twenty second, when we're in the draft phase, to have input on how the budget has developed, prior to that final vote. We, Libby and I discussed a variety of community forums that she and maybe one or two board members would want to join to host. Um, one in mid-December, an open forum, and we've talked about shifting the time and virtual or in-person to you know, uh, so one proposed for December tenth, four to five, in person at the high school with a virtual option. January seventh, so this would be, uh, actually just before, maybe we change that around, but a virtual offering, similar, but this one seven to eight PM. Try people after bedtime, after dinner, um, and then another one, like a lunch drop-in, all virtual. Um, so we're kind of thinking about it that way. And those would all be in in ahead of the more formal community forums that we would do to say, this is the budget we have
Got it.
approved and proposed.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Which are warned meetings.
Let me do that.
Yep. Yep.
Um, and and not only community, but thinking about that in terms of staff as well, could we tack on to their Monday staff meetings? Uh, can we engage with Patlene's Journalism Class? Can we engage with Patlene's journalism class to get some students on board? All that kind of thing. But I'm open to more ideas.
Yes. I mean, you asked the question, where do board members want to get involved? I would like to help out as much as possible in both stages, the gathering information and then the sort of like mobilization to vote stage. Maybe what would be helpful is if there was like a signup sheet column in here because then we could, as, as we get closer to dates and things like that, of when these things are happening, we as board members could be like, oh yeah, put me in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
As a somewhat precursor to that, I'd love to learn from you all, who do you, who, what groups do you feel you have connections with that Libby and I might not? Is anybody deeply engaged with the Kellogg library and their programs? Or is someone on, a part of Roxbury Roots? Are there other sort of big groups that you are engaged with that the, the district might not directly be? That you could help us to kind of reach out to them and establish what are the opportunities there that we could then sign up for?
About that. Coming to mine is my book club, but
Roxbury is pretty small. I might not be super close with everyone, but like pretty small.
Beyond Roxbury Roots and Rising and select board, are there other groups that I might have missed in my?
There's a Rafters group. There are, there, let me, let me reach out. Let me reach out and get back to you because I think that there are, there are groups that we can identify that we could intentionally reach out to. And they would volunteer to, they would tell me, they'll tell me who.
Reddish, your town has a monkey problem.
Yeah, that's the Roxbury Roots.
And my, my goal with like any of this engagement would be to equip you all, depending on what kind of phase we're at, would, with the applicable tangible for that moment where we add something to hand out. A QR poster to hang, a feedback form, paper and a digital through the QR code. So you have those at any given thing that you might volunteer for. In addition, I thought about sending a, what make like weekly or bi-weekly email to the board saying, here's our tangibles. Here's our things coming up next week. Here's the elevator speech of the, the bi-weekly period that we're in. So anytime you're out in the community, you can, you can say, okay, this is the message that we've all aligned on and are sharing right now. And we are really promoting attendance at the community forum happening two weeks from now. That's our immediate focus. And I think that's where we, I can help shift to equip you all with what you need to confidently go out there.
Yeah, I love that approach. I think you, even more so than just like a big checklist or, or of like signup, right? Like those bi-weekly emails with the immediate needs. I can't be on next Tuesday, right? So like to know what I'm doing January twenty eighth, you know, who knows? But, but getting those, those tangibles and then like the upcoming opportunities, that's awesome. Thank you so much. This is amazing.
Awesome. Well, we will, we really look forward to filling in on this, this work and engaging as we move forward. It's just a huge, huge lift and we haven't had anything like this before. So this is great.
I did that.
You can't have her.
No, he's thinking about his own outside business there.
Yeah, that's not using the, the ready slice of data and things like that. I had no idea that that was like possible, let alone like that you're using that to inform strategy. I think that's really cool. I'm really impressed. So I'm not saying anything because I can't think of anything beyond what you've already addressed here. The only thing that came to my mind was students, like is there like a get out the vote or like, do students here know they need to like register when they're eighteen? That's the only thing that I could think of. And I think you mentioned that, that there's a journalism.
Uh, like voter registration drive, but I think that after the presidential election, like I, I don't know how much students know that local elections are a thing that they need to do. Cause I don't think there's as much. I don't think there's as much publicity around those as there is around other elections. So I think.
Let's make sure that happens. Yeah.
It's really.
We were thinking about the TAs and the solo walks that you all have and use, using those in tandem with Jason to and your teachers, of course, to teach you how to register to those. If you are registered, here's why it's important to vote.
It's a good life skill. Straighten it up.
So thank you. Thank you for staying late. I know that.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah.
We heard off course, what you're off course. So pretending we're in Chicago, we're actually kind of on time, but so
It's a little west of me?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's central time.
It's central time, exactly. Do you have a motion to approve three policy amount of supports? B six, the electronic communications between employees and students. C three, transportation and B one, substitute teachers.
I will, we will approve it.
I'll second.
You'll second.
Any, any discussion or questions about? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? My report's passed. Now a motion to move into executive session. Anna has conveniently provided the language, but if not, I can read it and see during the motion.
Can I add on contract negotiations to that very briefly?
Sure. Yes. Oh, except there's a, there's a finding we need. It's premature general public knowledge that would put the district at a substantial disadvantage.
There you go.
So if there's someone who wants to make a motion that says what Anna and I just pasted together.
I know. What Anna and Jim just said.
Second.
I'll second.
All's in favor? Bye.
So now I believe that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the contract of the superintendent under the provisions of title one, section three, one, three, A, three of Vermont statutes.
And contract.
And contract negotiations.
Do you have a second? All's in favor?
Aye.